When the kids first come out here, they've got yard sticks and meter sticks. So they know one's bigger than the other and they've gotta lay everything and measure it out. So they know what's going on. And they dug all the trenching for the irrigation that's here. They put in all the plants. A number of classes came out and they did the onions on the side and the marigolds. We harvested a lot of tomatoes already and we got them out before the winter came. And that's one of the best parts out here is these kids really know their seasons now because of what we're out here and what happens to the plant if a cold comes. Does anybody know, well, let's do this as a quick test. If you don't want to do it, I understand, but will everybody point north?
From here?
North, where's north?
North would be just about that direction.
Well, actually, it's this way. This campus runs dead center from flagpole to cafeteria on north, true north. And these kids are learning that because we pounded in their heads the first day. We tell them, go north all the way down to the last north bed and get that for me. And we don't tell them any other direction. And that's one of the things that we bring in when we're out here all the time. This stuff was donated by Ori Vena. This is gonna expand one more layer out over here. And that is gonna be, shall I say, one of our big engines for the big project of getting all of the leafy green vegetables to our cafeteria. All right, now, let's do this the simpler way. There's 105 poles out there. There's three pots on each pole. So how many pots are there?
115.
How much?
315.
All right. There's 12 grow cells on each pole. How many grow cells are there?
I think it's 3150 plus two tenths of that, so it's about 33.
No, see, no offense, sir, but the common mistake was we didn't go back to there was 105 poles with 12 on each one. And we're not even counting the bottoms, the pots on the bottom, which collects our runoff.
This was one of the problems that we gave the kids.
You might want to mention how much each plant harvests is from.
Oh, my goodness. Endless. Yeah, and if you want, go ahead, Mr. Ross.
There is actually 1,288 grow cells here, which means you can have 1,288 plants at one time. The premise behind this was if we were gonna do the leafy green vegetables for salad bar, there's 1,288 grow cells. If we split it over four, that breaks it down to 322 head of lettuce per week that we can put into the cafeteria. Breaks down to approximately half a head of lettuce per child per week. I don't think the kids right now are getting half a head of lettuce. As if we were to do lettuce head, we're doing leafy green. So you can go ahead and just keep peeling the leaves off and it keeps growing. But it's just to give you a chance to know that there's a ton of produce that's gonna come out of an area that's only 22 by 50.
And that's just lettuce. That doesn't include the mustards or the Swiss chard that can be grown in there, all these different types of colorful plants that will go to the salad.
You don't have to transfer it out yet?
No, you just, this is what you do, sir.
Vinegar base.
And whoever harvests is gonna be part of the certified. They're gonna have their hands washed, their gloves, their little bag. They're just gonna be picking right down in here. The more you pick it, the more it'll grow. If you don't pick it, it'll bolt on us. And what is bolted? Well, you'll see. And the plants all bolted. They had no idea what seeds were. The honeybees came. Mr. Dean and Dave was saying, no, that's a honeybee, leave it alone. This place over there was about four feet high three weeks ago with broccoli, tomatoes, okra didn't do so well at all, karabbi. The kids really love the karabbi. I don't like it very much. And this plant will keep going. It'll get about this big and we'll probably cut it right here and just start another one with our grow cells. And we've got the germination that goes on in the aquaponics.
Where do you get the soil?
Well, this is a combination of Sherwood Forest amended with some stuff from Green World Path, a little bit of perlite. Well, we mixed it all right over there. The science club's in. And the science club, they put all these stackers in. We did the first three to show them what we were looking for and the kids said lettuce. Have at it. And they went to town.
Yeah, we always did the first ones because we had to figure out how we were gonna do our irrigation. Now that we know how we're doing it, the kids are doing all the work. So the water drips down into one to another?
Yep, I'll turn it on real quick for you.
That doesn't flood the top one?
Zone one. Ross, that's one, right?
That's zone two. That's a firm leaf. And you're actually tasting it? Warm. It has a totally different taste once you cool it down.
Oh, yeah, if you put it in ice water bath, woo, baby.
So what we decided on here is, of course, wants the pressure bills. We've gone to emitters. They're 10 gallon per hour emitters. We run the water for five minutes. By the time it's over with, you get a slight dip on the bottom, which will run the plants and down there water the plants.
What do we get in the water?
That is a regular water.
But we could invention a way to take it. We have enough capacity to take rainwater.
Yes, we're looking into now, actually, and these emitters here, they give out a little shower effect, so it's not a beat down. It actually gets the soil nice and damp. We're actually looking into going totally off the grid, totally free of, and don't take it wrong, it's a district.
Yeah.
Rainwater, reclamation.
Wait, 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 don't go talking off the grid until we figure out what it costs to be on the grid, so we know what Pine Grove gets back in their pocket.
Yeah, I think the other part of that is that you can get self-sustaining. And it does happen. That is part of being self-sustained is being able to do without the man.
All right, let me tell you what I'd really like to do at some point, and I don't want to do it today, but Earl, will you set up so I can talk with some of the kids that have been doing this? I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Come by on a Thursday afternoon.
Thursday afternoon?
From four to six.
What's today, Tuesday, Wednesday? Wednesday's, I got from Chandler, New York. I'll take a look.
The roots from the previous crop and some processed organic chicken manure that we get from Green World Path. All of our stuff comes from them. It's all good stuff. The third graders are embarking on the Bonnie Mega Cabbage Contest. I don't know if you've heard about it, but Bonnie sponsors it and they give you these for free. They gave us quite a few of them. Two third grade teachers are jumping in it. So we got one class over here and one over here. We told them, we'd get it ready for them. And all they've gotta do is come out and measure how they're gonna set it up, what's the distance, lay it out and plant them. We told them, we water it, but if they're gonna fertilize it, they gotta keep the log and keep the data. And then they say these are supposed to get up to 15 pounds. And we've got a bunch of them over there to see what they do, because it's amazing when people come, vendors, and they see what we're doing, it's like they empty their trucks. Yeah, the tilapia guy did the same thing. Green World Path has always blessed us, big time. We got a problem, they'll solve it and say, here, take care of it and get it done. This is a third grade class plot right there. That one is a YMCA plot. That's their second season at it. And it is interesting when somebody harvests something from the Y, hey, man, get out of my garden. Man, don't be taking that, we've been eyeballing it. Oh, yeah, it happens. So they gotta like play collard greens back and forth, you know, nobody goes home mad. And this one is a fourth grade teacher's class who is also in the science club. That's Ms. Hino's class. Actually, her and I, we were the first to start this five years ago, her and I. And she got, she's been on campus, but just had different responsibilities. And there's a composting bins in every area. We tell the kids, throw the scraps in there, pile it up, we'll see what happens, and we just let it go. All of the irrigation so far was dug and put in by us and/or students. And then we'll do a quick wash in the bin there. And then we'll head back to the aquaponics and the rabbits and the worms and the cobras.
So you say that YMCA?
Yep, they'll come out and take care of all of this.
Do you rent this place though?
Right now, we're just trying to keep interest and grow it so that this YMCA can tell the YMCA at Brooksville Elementary or anywhere else that it can be done.
This is probably the only crop in here that is very finicky. I would recommend it to just somebody in the backyard. And that's probably why it costs a lot is blueberries. You really gotta stay up on the soil and when you fertilize it and when you cut it back. But over there is thornless blackberries, which is a weed. And these are muscadine grapes, five different varieties, which is a weed as well. And the reason why we picked those is you can actually cut and stick from both of them and parents can take it home, put it right in the ground, can keep an eye on it, and you will be successful in Hernando County. Oh, yeah, absolutely. And that is a thornless blueberry. All of this was donated to us by DNS Blueberry, Dan Ebicki. He's an amazing supporter. He's been around from day one along with Green World Path. And he doesn't say it too much anymore because I take him up on it. He says, if you can get here before I finish my cup of coffee, it's yours. And I'm there in the morning. And he just loads up my trailer and we haul it off his farm and we bring it here to the school.
What do you do with those grapes?
These aren't even a year old. We got this from, I remember his name.
They're not like, you know, like grape jelly there.
The main reason why I wanted to move it here, this was way in the back. And last year, when we had those four days of the killer freeze, I raised the sprinklers up and I watered the whole thing and it was a winter wonderland. I took pictures and let every teacher know, you gotta get your kids out there, man, before the sun hits it. And all my science, they went out there and the kids were like, whoa! I mean, they were walking on ice. And I said, Mr. Dean, let me get this in the front, so everybody who comes to school is gonna have to see it. So when they hear on the radio that the farmers are really mad or the neighbors of the farmers are mad because the water table's down, well, they gotta do this and that, they can actually come to school and say, I know what they're talking about. You gotta insulate them with the ice jacket to make it through the winter. And if that was out here last year, it would have been amazing. And that's why we moved it here. And we put it alongside these two tonka trucks that will, they'll handle anything in Hernando County. But these are babies, you gotta take care of them. This is one of the crops I...
All your irrigation is actually under the ground, not sprinkled on top?
No, it's actually right here. They're called spot sticks. They come with different gallons per minute, a different radius of flow. And when you're done, if this one dies, you just flip it back around and it shuts it off. One of the best things. The rule is, from what I understand, is in Hernando County, if you drip irrigation, you can irrigate all day long. But once you bring out the big boys, you gotta stick to your schedule or you'll get fined 200 bucks. And the seasons is one of the main reasons why I wanted this out here, so they could see fall. I mean, they fell. And when spring comes, these are beautiful green and there's flowers and bees all over to go. The fence line was here and there was bushes and all grass. And this was the only thing up here. Mr. Dana Miller hooked us up with the mines on Ponce de León's. They came in and screened the top and bought the sheds for us. And somehow, we got rid of the bushes on the other side of the fence. And I just abugged Mr. Dana Miller enough that one day I came to work and there was a crew here moving everything out to there. Green World Path sponsored with the shade cloth. The wires were put up by the people who came in on the weekend. And Mr. Aaron's, that's his name, at Fernando, he had these. I saw them in his greenhouse one summer and got to talk to him and he wanted to do a little trading. So Mr. Aaron's and Mr. Dean did a little negotiation and we got all three, two of these setups.
Never heard of this competition.
No, yeah, well, he thought what he wanted out of you. He was happy. The best thing about this is, we talked about this two days ago, we would be willing to give up that half of the system because just this alone could probably do 10 times as much as what we have here easily with just these two tanks. So if another administrator and a committee or a team of people at another school said, I'm on board, hey, we got it, come get it. We'll even set it up and show you how we do it. The missing link on this, and the kids are working on it, and they got some good ideas, because I always tell them, if something's moving, there's energy that you can harness or harvest and you can make electricity. So when they see things moving, they wanna, how can we get a wheel spinning and generating this and that and that? And we have a lady who got in with Progress Energy, what is her name? Beth.
Lavard.
Yes. She taught us right to grant. And the next one on the list is a solar panel that's gonna sit on top of here. And only two little fountain pumps and this compressor runs this whole operation. And it's more than enough. Like I said, this amount of fish and this amount of water in here will be 10 times the amount. Now, just for some stats on aquaponics, how's your voice? The numbers?
I'm fine.
Go ahead, the numbers, Dan.
Fun numbers for what?
How many fish per plant?
Oh, it's one pound of fish to 2.2 pounds of crop. So it's, or 30% more increase on the crop. It's astronomical, but, did he tell you how many fish are in here? Okay, we have anywhere between 500 and 700 fish sitting in that tank. And what they produce and waste will do, he says 10, I get close to the 20 on it. But he plays conservative and I like to go all the way on it. So you're talking tons off of one tank, three tanks here.
If they're gonna purchase those fish, how much does the fish cost?
Depends on...
From us or somebody else? On the open market?
On the open market, the finger limbs go for anywhere from 50 cents to a dollar.
Depending on their size.
Depending on their size and who you purchase them from. The school, you can breed them. That's what we have in the classroom. When we go back, we'll show you. They're prolific breeders, so you really don't need to buy them if one school has them. They can be distributed throughout the district quite easily.
Yeah, when we tell the kids the math on how many baby tilapias can be born in the season and you sell them for a dollar a piece, they all just go, give them an aquarium. If you can run an aquarium, actually two, you can breed some tilapias and all you gotta do is craiglis, a dollar a piece, so long as they're the blue Nile and the kids know, that's what kind of fish. Gotta be a blue Nile for the state of Florida and then there's no paperwork involved. Anything other than that, a hundred dollars a year and then you gotta fill out paperwork. So you wanna give us some food?
Yeah, here. Okay, that's the duckweed on the top.
They're kinda shy and we don't know why, but they'll probably come up when we close the lid. Come on, fellas.
You hear them?
There they go. They're flopping around in there.
See, now that's the way that he feeds. That's the way I feed. There's 700 fish in there. Now you hear him coming up here and say, hey, Mr. Ross is here, he's actually giving us food.
They might, they might come by the window a couple of times.
Now, what we're...
How many times a day do you have to put them up? Depends on the temperature. Yeah, when it's hot, they eat like crazy.
But what we're looking into here, this is duckweed. It grows rapidly. If we can get five containers set up with duckweed, you can harvest three quarters of it, feed it to the fish, within five days, the three quarters you fed will replenish itself, so you... Five to seven tanks you can always keep and it becomes sustainable at point, because right now, 50 pounds of fish food is going for $25 a bag. So we need to get away from that and get into something that they can eat that's natural. There are third world countries that are actually taking duckweed right now and looking into it as a staple food for them because of its high in proteins and nutrients. And we can give it to the fish for free.
Yeah, and it's good, it's good fish. The only challenge with tilapia is the cold weather. There's no known disease that have knocked out anybody's tilapia in production on record as of yet, whereas other fish, if they get something that flows through them, they're gone in two weeks. Tilapia?
How do you manage that?
The temperature? Well, we went down to the feed store and we bought Ed Hood old fashioned farmer's bucket, water bucket heater. And it is connected to an Amazon specialist thermometer.
It's tied into a digital thermometer over here that we can regulate the water temperature.
And then this is our thermometer that doubles as our compost meter and we see what's in there. The deadly number is 56 for more than about two hours, then you have fish for breakfast. But other than that, they will make it. They slow down, they don't like to eat as much. During the breeding season, they're crazy. And they're very, very active. They're the fastest converters of food, feed to flesh of any livestock in production right now. So for the first six months, they'll grow like this, and then they'll plateau a little bit. You can get them bigger if you wait, but then the farmer has to decide, am I gonna raise the fish and pull them out and start over? Or am I gonna keep the fish and go after the product? And this, this particular project, the kids and I and Mr. Ross, because he's back here more than me, because I kinda gave it over to him, is the variables and the possibilities are endless, literally endless.
And as far as sustainability with fertilizer for our in the ground crops and even the stackers, we have the fish waste. There's a nonprofit group in Kansas City, they sent their fish waste out to the university and it came out with, what, a 10, 10, 6, 3?
10, 10, 6, I think it was.
10, 10, 6. So we can harvest the poo, dry it out, and then put it right back into the ground. And then again, we're going back to sustainability. We don't, and don't take it wrong, but we won't be relying on Green World Path at that point because we can use the fish waste as fertilizer for the, for the in the ground crops and the stackers.
No, the electricity can go down for, these fish will probably last the whole summer in still water. And these beds are over a foot deep and the flowback pipe is back there. So even if we lost the incoming water, the flowback is about maybe an inch below that. And these plants, they'll last, they'll sit in that water forever. Doctor Strickland, when we asked him about getting certified for aquaponics, he just kinda smiled and he said, fellas, it's an open market right about now, there's no rules. Nobody can tell us, you can't do this, you can't do anything. The biggest thing is a farmer has to decide whether they're gonna go after the fish or they're gonna go after the crop. Because the crop is used to filter the water for the fish. And the kids will say, Mr. Potteet, I've been watching tilapia at Walmart, it's going up. I said, yeah, it is. It's almost tripled in a year and a half. And then I told them, I said, what about if somebody buys them whole? And you can buy them whole. If you truck down a full grown tilapia that's in the, in the tank, you don't, it's my understanding that if somebody says, I'll buy that fish for $5 from you right now, $5 cash in your pocket and you're out the door. But I guarantee you, it's gonna be of an Asian persuasion because they'll eat the whole thing except the guts. Americans only want the flesh. And that's something different. We don't get into it because there's way too much red tape to try to do something here, but we can sell them live and people can buy them and take them and start their own setup at home. Yeah, it's a, the middle school and the high school, the high schoolers can make some money off of that. When we show you the breeding colony in there and how fast they reproduce in a four month period, what, what's your number on it?
It's anywhere from 2,000 to 16,000 per fish.
And you got four females and one male in the tank at a dollar a pop in probably a month after they're born. When the female is ready, she'll swim over there. I've only seen it once in two years. And she'll lay her eggs in his pot over there. He'll fertilize them and then she'll pick them all back up. They're mouth bruders and they will hang on to them for the next 10 to 14 days. And you can see her, she'll hang out down over there, kinda big distance. She doesn't take big gulps anymore because she's got all these little eggs in there. And as they get bigger, her jaw starts to drop and she just kinda hangs out. And normally, we switch her from that tank to this tank and let her hang out over there. So I get the blessing and I told any teacher, we'll give you the fish, set it up in your classroom. When you come in in the morning and if you're the first ones and you don't startle her, I've come in and her whole face is surrounded with maybe 200 or 300 baby fish. And then she, oh, he's here, and she starts opening her mouth. Some of them swim in, some of them she's gotta chase, but by the time the kids are in there, they're all back in her mouth. And then one day, she's done. She won't let them back in and she's looking at the top like, get me out of this nursery. And you scoop her up and you put her back in there. And if the system's working right, there's another one that's ready to go out into another tank. And they're about the size of a grain of rice. And I've seen the other tank last summer, the summer before last, 400 at one time. It was amazing. And I had a problem in my syphilis flow. I came to work the next day and they were all dried out. But that, those were born here. That's the...
It's the last batch.
How long though?
Those, those were born beginning of November.
Yeah, maybe two months. But in ideal situations, we would have the water temperature monitored and regulated and everything. If we were after the fish, they would grow like crazy. And at that size, they're probably a dollar a piece. Yeah, they don't take much food, anything. What I've done in the past is take a Rubbermaid container and set it across the top, fill half of it with terracotta clay balls, run a regular $9 fountain pump from here, through this Rubbermaid container, it filters through the rocks. And then there's a T across the top with holes, so it all captures, goes back down and it drains back into the tank. The agitation of the surface of the water creates enough air for the fish. The plants filter the fish water. And it was in the classroom next to the studio. I didn't have enough sunlight. I had tomatoes and I had peppers. They were growing like crazy. The kids came in and they watched the whole thing from seed. We just threw the seeds right in the rocks. And if you had a grow light on it, you'd have your garden indoor. The other enterprise that some kids don't like fish, they like fuzzy rabbits. We also have a business partner. Mr. Dean's requirement was, whatever you produce, you better have a place to get it off my campus. I said, I understand, you don't want thousands of chickens or whatever lying around. So the guy said, as soon as those rabbits are born at five weeks, he'll buy all of them back at $2.50 a pop. No questions asked, what color, what anything, whatever it may be.
So right now, we have two domesticated females and three meat rabbits.
See the fur moving in there?
And one of them just had kids.
The kids love this. You wanna talk about a teachable moment? How many do they have? What do they eat? Well, they need their mama right now. And that female, this was small, she normally gives us about six to eight. Are you allergic to rabbits?
No.
I should have asked. Anybody peanuts, rabbits, anything? But the coolest thing about it is the kids have to figure out how much feed does the mom take? What does it weigh? How much is the bag of feed? They do the math. How many days you got out of that bag? And if, right here, I got five bucks right here, well, that's almost, almost a quarter of a bag, okay? And they do breed like crazy. They do indeed.
How old are those? Three days, four days.
Yeah, at the most.
Do you have to deal with weather issues with them as well?
Well, that's, if you look, we have it hooped over so the north wind doesn't blow into there. As long as we keep them dry and out of the inclement winds, they're fine. The meat rabbits, they're just waiting. They're almost old enough, they're only three months old right now, so they're almost old enough to start breeding.
If that operation is going out here, the fence, no, the fence was from the custodial department, the pole was from Mr. Torrelo's backyard and the gate, because we wanna hang it like commercial kids, so the classes can come and walk all the way around it instead of having them come right in here. Strawberries are right back there. Those of you who want some strawberries, don't pick them, except for you, sir, stay away from them.
There's actually quite a few that are ready. We've been keeping people away from them, so y'all can try them. That's, that was an experiment for us because it's our first time leading strawberries. And we spent the weekend shoveling that soil and covering it and getting ready.
I think we lost some of our strawberries.
Unfortunately, talking with, with the master garners and Stacy Strickland, repetitive strawberry in the ground leads to nematodes. But the stackers would be premium. But the stackers would be premium. I mean, how would you like to have 1,288 strawberry plants sitting out there in that area?
That's what those were designed for. The first guy who came out, carpenter, he was a strawberry guy. Now, does Green World Path have anything that can take care of nematodes in the strawberry patch out there? Okay, so then we don't have to worry about killing it and redoing it, just putting new plants in there. And the last thing was, the last thing on the video was one of Mr. Dean's favorites. We finally got to it, was worms.
So we can head over to the front.
You can deal with the worms. You like those?
That's for fishing. The water in this tank versus the grow beds. There's actually water in the grow beds. But the, the water hyacinth? Water hyacinth is high in nitrogen. It's also an educational experiment to teach the kids about this and what it did to the waterways. But our big thing is, is we take and compost it. And then it turns back into the ground and actually we use it again to enrich the grounds. It's an educational event with it. We get to show the kids exactly where it is.
Forget about these guys from the river.
Mr. Potte was told that, that, uh, with Lakucha, with Lakucha?
Yep.
Doesn't have any water lettuce left because they were eradicating the water hyacinth. They killed the water lettuce. But look what we have, tons of water lettuce. So we need to look into, do they need some to start replenishing their river? Because we have it here.
And it grows like crazy.
We're just using it right now as a water filtration. In here, our goldfish and koi, we've got a koi fish that's probably two and a half feet long in there.
What people were thinking was the notches, they're actually valuable.
Now though, to let you know with the worms, this is what we got. Anybody that's a fisherman?
Hook them up. Show Mr. Dean those bad boys. Hook them up. Yeah, but you're supposed to catch something with them.
Now what we did is through Ms. Dory Vaughn, she called us up and said, look, get your worms going. And she cut us a check. And we went over to rabbits, et cetera.
Yep.
And bought three pounds of worms. Now what would you guys guesstimate a pound of worms go for? 1750 a pound.
Wow, really? I thought they were like about five bucks.
1750.
Well, these are premium, these are premium worms.
No, they're just red wigglers.
So they got the red wriggler, wigglers coming in here and they're eating everything, the compost. Now the best way to get it going to start out is banana peels and coffee grinds. So we went to Starbucks. Starbucks says they, they bag their grinds separately. First come, first served. They've got tons of farmers there to get it. Well, we got about 50 pounds of coffee grinds up. I still wanna see if I can't get a cup of coffee out of them because it smells so good. And we have the top one where we feed them up. And here's the bottom one. Now this here is almost ready to go back into the ground. That's all worm castings. Again, you're enriching the soil and the nutrients. It takes off from even having to go to Green World Path or buying for, uh, commercial fertilizer when we can put this into the ground. We can make tea out of it. Worm tea. It's, uh, one ounce of, of tea to one gallon of water. And you can make a lot of fertilizer. That can go right into the injection system that, that fertilizes the stackers. Again, it takes it more self-sustainable. You're getting off of having to buy things. Everything that we do in the school is about the cost. Bottom line comes, any business, it's about the bottom dollar. And if we can get in any way doing it at a discount or free, that's the way that we're going with it. So that's why we're, uh, got the worms coming in here. I actually can't wait to get that going out. It's, smells like earth.
Yeah, it does.
And then we have the bottom bin here. That, if we were to have the tea, we could set up a five gallon bucket here and it'd flow through and drip down in. Also it gets the worms, if they escape, you can pick them up. You keep it a little moist. Now they said, they'll say that, uh, when your worms don't like where they're at, they'll become, uh, a worm mass. There'll be like all 3,000 worms in a mass and they'll be heading out to town. So you have to watch for that. We always lift it up every day to see if we're getting a mass exit into the bottom. And then if we do, I've added more coffee grinds and bananas. I've eaten more bananas in the last month than I have in my entire life. But again, this is more for the self-sustaining aspect of it. So we can get this going and running. We don't have to limit it to two totes. You can put it in and make it as big as you want to.
The guy we bought them from, he grows them underneath his rabbits.
Right.
He has chicken houses in Missouri that he converted to rabbits and he's got like 300 does and so many bucks. And he was tired of the rabbit poop. So he built these boxes. And now he's making just as much money with the worms and the rabbits feed the worms. And see, we run into the, the guidelines of mammalian manure's gotta sit for 120 days in the field or we have to compost it to a certain degree.
Or you can send it across from Nature Coast.
Yeah, well, that's, that's human remains though.
But see, if, if we take it from the rabbits, there's your mammalian manure, but now we got worm manure, which isn't a mammal. And that stuff is the second best fertilizer in the world. Backwater was number one, but the boss said, backhouses have to be out there.
I was about to ask you.
Can't we put it in the middle?
Problem is they're, they're getting diseased. Yeah, they're being diseased. Look, I lived in Kentucky. I can tell you about wine.
So this is the second best fertilizer and it doesn't cost us anything now. Well, we have to feed the rabbits. That's one thing we haven't. All green leafy vegetables not the best.
I am looking into, uh, rabbit fodder that we can grow from day one to day eight, give to the rabbits. Um, it's just the research behind it. I can find chicken fodder and cattle fodder, but it's kinda hard to find. Say again, it's one of those that I get tired of buying feed. I really do. So I wanna find a way that it doesn't cost money to get it done.
So what about in the summertime when it's really hot around?
They can't get above 80 degrees. You can put them under the shade. There's enough shade around here. As long as they stay moist and damp, they're gonna be good. If they, if we put them in the sun, you're gonna cook them or they're leaving. So it's, it's one of those, uh, that we're just gonna have to really monitor. Keep them under the shade. We have underneath all the grow beds. There's enough room that we can put them under there to keep them nice and cool. Direct sun will kill them. I'd say put them in the classroom, but I think people have problems with worms. It's like, uh, mass exit and you come into a big ball of worms at your door. The kids wouldn't, I'm thinking some of the teachers. They don't, some of the teachers don't like it. If it creeps and crawls, they're not into it.
I met him a couple of years ago and he's always helped us. I said, Mr. Case, you got any strawberry? He goes, how many do you want? I figured, let's shoot for the stars. I said, well, about 200. And he goes, 200? I said, well, the case is coming 600. You wanna come and count them or you just take the case? Okay, so we took the case. He gave us the black plastic. He gave us the irrigation underneath. He said, this is what you do. He gave us, uh, some pointers on the Ventura valve over there. And then Mr. Ross and I got a trailer of topsoil and, ooh, it was a long weekend that day, but it got in because he said, get it in the ground. You've got three days. You know, get it in the ground. And, uh, we, we did alright. It would be nice to see another roll, but we don't know. The kids are gonna have to decide if they wanna do something else with us.
Ultimately, if they wanna keep it there, I wanted to do an S going all the way down. Because and not put the plastic on to show that you don't have to have the commercial look at home. Cause like he said in the beginning, everything we do here, we want to have a parent come in and say, I want this at home. And I don't know too many parents that want black plastic in the back of their yard looking like this. So we, I wanted to develop one that would look like at home garden.